Good evening, everyone. Thank you. We are sorry for the little bit of a delay. We were having some Zoom difficulties. I guess I'm going to ask, sometimes when we have multiple people on Zoom and the owls going, sometimes the audio isn't that great. So maybe raise someone on this. If the audio isn't good, let us know. Somebody on Zoom, if you want to raise your hands. All right, we are coming back. We're calling us back to order from our executive session. I'm going to read the following statement again. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2020- sorry, of 2022 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of open meeting law. You are hereby advised, this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. This meeting is also being recorded by Harbor Media. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of this meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform other participants of said recording. I'm assuming neither of our two audience members are recording. Anyone on Zoom?
Nope.
All right, great. All right.
I don't know if they can hear us.
Oh, I hope they can hear us. Otherwise, my call to- I'll tell them before having audio issues will go unneeded.
Can we ask if they can raise their hand if they can hear us?
Good idea. Yes.
If anyone is watching on Zoom, can you use the raise hand function so that we know that the audio is working?
Can you type something in the chat?
Oh, we got a hand clap.
Oh.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. I'll also make a note before we get started, too, that tonight we had on the agenda, item 9.1 was to receive Foster Elementary School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate, but we are postponing that presentation to our January 23 meeting. So apologies to anyone who might be on, who came specifically for that presentation, but that will be at our next school committee meeting. All right, with that, we'll move to item number four, which is approval of minutes. We have three meeting minutes to approve. Anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the joint school committee meeting with the advisory committee and select board held on November 29, 2022.
Do you have a second?
Second?
All right. Any discussion? All right. Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, I wasn't there.
And one abstention. All right, thank you. Those are approved. And then how are folks feeling? I think the meeting of minutes of the 12th and the January 5th were a little later coming than usual. Or folks, did folks have a chance to read them?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we'll take action on those if someone wants to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 12, 2022.
Any discussion or comments?
Yes, just for the East Elementary School Improvement Plan, I'd done a note earlier today. We took a vote on that to approve it, so that should probably be in there.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Vote on approving those with the change indicated by Carrie. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? No? All right, those are done as well. And 4.3?
4.3, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 5, 2023.
Any discussion on those, other than well done, getting them done so quickly and staying on top of them? We do have a lot of meetings this month, so that's important. All right, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? No? Great. All right, those are approved as well. Section five of our, item number five on our agenda are questions and comments. As we've always have, the school committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed. We set aside 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting. We also do, as a practice, allow for comments from the public and questions during the new business items that are up for discussion. So before I read the whole section of this, is there anyone here in the audience that has any public comment? No? Anybody on Zoom with anything for the public comment period? Give it a minute or seconds.
I am saying nothing.
Okay. All right. Again, if folks do have questions or comments, we do, we'll take them during the new business section. All right, item six is the superintendent's report. Dr. Adams?
So in your information, we provided a couple of things. It's a busy couple of weeks coming up, including all of our discussions on budget. The first item you have in there is a report from last year of the private school enrollment. This data is collected by the superintendent's office by look, calling and each of the schools and indicating how many students are Hingham Public Schools students. So you'll see by school and by grade, all of the numbers of students enrolled in a private school location. And we're in the process of collecting that information for this year.
One question. A few of them have asterisks. Are those, those are the Chapter 766 schools?
Uh, yes. Yes.
Okay. And then TECA has three asterisks?
TECA, the TECA is the online, right?
Is that what that, okay, that's what that's for? Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, this is, um, this is really great information, I think, to have, and this list of private schools is very exhaustive. So I was impressed with how many private schools are out there. I mean, a lot of them I knew, but some of them were new names to me. Any other questions or comments on that? All right.
Giving Nate access to the folder.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, Nate.
So that he has access.
All right.
All right. All right. Next, I have, we have a couple of things coming up. We had the, we opened up this Saturday through Kids in Action, the pilot of our after-schools Beginners Strings Class for third and fourth graders. Happy to say that, well, you know, there's very few slots left. Only in the 515 section are there any slots left, and there are very few. So if there's anyone left who's interested, do it right away. So we're excited that there's interest and for this pilot, and we'll continue working on it. And I know Ms. Bellis is in the audience, and we thank her and Jackie from Kids in Action for their work in getting the pilot going. So that's exciting. We also are starting to share information on the Kids in Action pre-K Spanish immersion program. We have two information sessions, one on January 19 at 7 o'clock in person at the Foster, and the 24th, we're going to do one virtually, also at 7 o'clock on Zoom, and are trying to share the information. And then registration will open shortly afterwards on January 23 for the pre-K Spanish immersion program at the Foster. It's a full day pre-K from 8:30 to 2 o'clock for our four-year-olds. So we're excited to get going on that and generate interest and share information widely about that. We also, not in the packet, but this Wednesday is at 6:30, we have our incoming kindergarten open house where information session where families, if you have a child turning five by August 31, 2023, please come down and hear about the amazing kindergarten program that we have. We'll have teachers, principals will be there sharing information. It'll be right here at Town Hall on Wednesday at 6:30. And so we're also trying to share widely that information to be able to share with our families, the kindergarten curriculum and materials and resources and the registration process. Also, in the packet is a update from South Shore Collaborative, where they presented their FY23 financial report, indicating that the outlook was good, and the board approved their financial report. They also reported that they accepted the FY, the board accepted the FY22 annual report and their independent audit, and the audit was clean with no findings. And the interim director of Student Services gave a brief report on her transition from, she was previously the community program coordinator, and now she's serving as the Director of Student Services, and they've had a seamless transition. And that's it.
Great, thank you. We'll move, unless anyone has questions, Dr. Adams? All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is communications. So, Dr. Adams, do you have any?
No.
No? All right. Student communications. Nathan?
Hello.
Hello.
A few quick student updates. So just the general school news stuff. The boys hockey team raised $30,000 to Marshfield High School to the Hockey Fights Cancer fundraiser last weekend, which we're highlighting. And the head coach of our basketball team got his 200th career victory. On school events coming up, the hockey team has a game on Wednesday at Fenway, and the tickets are free. You can get them at MLB.com. There's a link in the Patriot Ledger. That's going to be really cool, playing on the, what's it called, a winter classic ice. The high school, the quiz bowl team is going to be appearing on, I believe, the night date here. I added the date, but I think it's the Sunday, the 22nd, against Lexington, in an appearance at WGBH for High School Quiz Show filming, which is going to be really cool. We're going to be, I have to disclose I'm captain, but we're going to be filming for a TV appearance. And then the AKHS Small Music Ensemble Concert will be this Wednesday, this Thursday, excuse me, this Thursday at the Hingham High School auditorium at 7:00 p.m. And then so on SAC, we've brought up a few new projects. Tony Cicero, our sophomore rep, brought up looking into some AP courses that he thought were offered at similar public high schools that he thought we don't offer here, and he's just looking into talking to teachers who teach in similar topics about the potential of adding them, and I think he might talk to a few department heads about that. So that's his project. The two main ones I think he was going to look at was econ, and then I think he might also talk to Mr. Jewett about pre-cow. I think he just wanted to kind of explore why we don't have those courses and the potential of adding them. We've continued work on the community service project with school council. What I did was I just kind of laid out the benchmark districts, set up contacts, and have assigned members to go and interview and find out how they've been actually managing them outside of a program of stage requirement. And then the other project that we might start, because I think that there was some, I'll update that in the next meeting. And then so additionally, Alex Doggett, who was our junior rep, he stood in the last meeting. I'm going to, he's also going to be coming here on the 12th. And so just, I just can't make it because of concert, but the goal of just having us come to budget meetings, I feel, is that since this is going to be, again, a tough override, just having student perspectives and us kind of listening in on the meetings, I think could be useful at some point, once we've kind of collected the data, to have him speak on something. So those are about things I have. Yep.
That's great. Thank you. And thank you for, and Alex, for jumping in to listen in on the budget meetings, because it is really important to get the students' perspectives on this, because it does all impact students, and we're all very mindful of that. So really appreciate that, Nathan. Thank you. 7.3, any other communication from school committee members received? No? All right. Item eight is unfinished business, of which we have none. So we will move on to item nine, which is new business. 9.1 was the Foster Elementary School, but we are postponing that to January 23. And then we have a number of grants to approve, which is all great news. Is, Dr. Adams, are you presenting those, or Katie, or Ayesha?
We'll share the responsibility.
Okay, that sounds good. There's so many.
The first one, I believe the first one is the world language one?
Yes.
So we received notification that we were awarded a grant that will support the teachers in professional development, in working towards curriculum alignment for the 2021 Massachusetts World Language Curriculum Framework. It's the most recent curriculum framework that was just adopted. And so the purpose of the grant is to continue to support districts in aligning their own curriculum to those standards. And you'll see that we're grateful for Ms. Pollard, our World Language Director, for taking advantage of this opportunity. We've been awarded $9,375 that will be used during the summer for teacher stipends to participate in professional development and work on curriculum documents. That will allow us to focus on the alignment towards social emotional skills, social justice topics. So we're grateful for this opportunity for our teachers.
That was great. Thank you. To, does anyone have any questions for Dr. Adams about this? I said before, it's nice to receive money. So less questions around receiving it versus spending it. Does someone want to make a motion to accept the grant?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the grant of $9,375 provided by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the purpose of funding summer teacher workshops to continue curriculum development and alignment with Massachusetts World Languages Curriculum Framework.
And a second?
I have a second.
All those in, or any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Everyone, that is unanimous. All right, that is approved. Thank you, Erica Pollard. All right, 9.3 is the Mass Cultural Council, STARS.
And Ms. Bellis is here. We'll let her talk to it. Do you want to talk to this grant?
All right.
Yep, the news come on out.
Yeah, if you can come up, thank you, Joanne.
So we applied for a Mass Cultural Council STARS residency grant, and the purpose of these is a three-plus-day residency that brings students and teachers together with practicing artists, scientists, and humanists to create a rich cultural experience. Key criteria for successful grant applications included the strength of learning objectives and connection of the learning objectives to the visiting artist residency. All grant applications also required one socially conscious learning objective to help students connect with their own artistic voice and the world around them. The grant total was $3,250, and we're going to use it to bring in a visiting artist, Emily Russ, for a five-day workshop series. She is a Hingham High graduate, so she knows what it is to go through our program. She now teaches art and makes art in a Norwell studio, so she's local. She's very influenced by her coastal roots. So if you go on her website, she has a website, Emily Russ, which is linked in the notes here, you can see her work and how it's kind of influenced by her upbringing in the South Shore. So she's going to guide students through the process of brainstorming ideas and sketches to help connect with their artistic voice and the way that they connect with their world around them. She's going to talk about her professional career, and then she's going to help them design rubber and clay stamps that will then be used to stamp wheel-thrown and hand-sculpted pottery to make more professional pieces.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Joanne.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant of $3,250 provided by the Mass Cultural Council through its STARS residency grant program for the purpose of funding materials and compensation for a five-day workshop series for ceramics and sculpture students.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that's unanimous. Congratulations. All right, Cape Cod Bank Five Educational Mini Grants for Science and, for science, just science.
Right.
Not just science, for science.
Yeah, exactly.
Only science.
Well, at our recent budget meetings, they had promised that we would go for every grant we could find, large and small.
And you're delivering.
This falls into the smaller category, but still impactful. So the first of these two grants is from Cape Cod Five Educational Mini Grant Awards in the amount of $280 for a spectrophotometer for the high school labs. It allows students to analyze wavelengths of light in their chemistry and physics classes. And Cape Cod Five also granted $489 for our beloved endangered turtle project that's been going on for many years at the middle school. For those of you who aren't aware, our middle school students raise an endangered species of Plymouth red-bellied turtles in their classroom, and this grant will help support that project.
Great, thank you. Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the two mini-grants of $280 and $489 provided by Cape Cod Five Bank for the purpose of purchasing an additional spectrophotometer for the high school science department and to fund the endangered turtle project at Hingham Middle School, respectively.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous as well. Great. All right, the next one is the DESI Opal WPI storyline?
Yes, so this grant here is a bit larger, so $6,000, and this is going to support our middle school science adoption. So you've heard at recent meetings about our initiative at the middle school to adopt the Open ZIED curriculum, which is a free, open-source curriculum. What this grant will do is to help fund professional development. So it is very intensive professional development offered through WPI, and this will be first of a multi-part series. And so this is an exciting development. And again, we will be targeting additional grants to continue this work, which will be a multi-year project to implement that grant.
Great, thank you. Do you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the grant of $6,000 provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, for the purpose of funding stipends for substitutes for all educators to participate in a four-day professional development series through DESI's Open Access Professional Learning, OAPL Initiative.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, another DESI grant, Financial Literacy.
So this grant is in the amount of $10,345. The grant was submitted by the high school business teacher, Joe Tarantello. It will be used for two initiatives. The first one is to fund the updating of the annual credit for life fare, which is offered to high school seniors. This is being brought back after a short hiatus due to the pandemic. So this will fund the materials needed for that event, as well as some planning time for the staff involved. The second part of the grant will be to purchase a three-year license for a personal finance simulation software that will be used in the, as part of the curriculum for the personal finance course. It covers multiple pieces of finance, including insurance, managing your finance, credit, taxes, homeownership, charitable giving, and many others. So it's an exciting opportunity for students to take advantage of a particular simulation that takes them through the understanding their personal finance.
That is great. Very worthwhile. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Financial Literacy Planning and Implementation Grant of $10,345 provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the purpose of funding supplies and stipends to update materials for the annual Credit of Life fare and for the purchase of a three-year license for a personal finance simulation software.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That is approved as well. And then the final grant for tonight is the DESI Genocide Education Grant.
So this one is $6,100. It will support professional development for our grades six through 12 social studies staff, implementing three, four, three through four workshops, split over our early releases in May and June. And the topics will focus on Holocaust and human behavior, contemporary antisemitism, and fostering constructive dialogue around difficult topics in the classroom. There'll also be an opportunity for US and world history teachers to dig in a little deeper, to make connections to their particular curriculums.
That is great. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the Genocide Education Grant of $6,100 provided by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the purpose of funding professional development workshops for all members of the Hingham Public Schools Social Studies Department.
Do you want a second?
I have a second.
All right, any discussion?
I just want to say that, assuming this, we approve this, and I think we will, it's over $35,000 in grants that, just from tonight, that are going to go, it's earmarked to benefit the students. So well done.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that is approved as well unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, to just add on to what Carrie was just saying, really appreciate the efforts to get these grants. And also, I would like to thank DESI for providing some of these grants, right? I mean, there, we often talk about the unfunded mandates and the things that happen, but just knowing that DESI is providing some grants, particularly for professional development, that will directly impact teachers and administrators, is really helpful to districts. So appreciate their contributing to much of the, some of the work that our staff has to do. All right, we'll move on to 9.8 to consider proposed changes to the MOU on Comfort Dog, also known as OPERE at Hingham High School, and act as appropriate. I see Rick Swanson is here. Are you talking to this, Dr. Adams?
Yep, Rick can come up to and ask question. We have questions specifically about this. We, I provided a memorandum to sort of outline the steps that we've taken. This was also shared with the policy subcommittee. In December, we met Police Chief David Jones, School Resource Officer Tom Ford, Rick Swanson, Principal at the high school, myself. At that meeting, we reviewed the memorandum of understanding that had been created, that was developed last year. We also drafted some procedures to, as described in the MOU, and outlined and tried to describe everything that needed to be outlined as per the MOU. We also, with Mr. Swanson's help, we surveyed the students, and you have a summary of those results, just a snapshot of some of the comments. Some of the comments that we heard repeatedly was the impact that OPERE has had in the school, on school culture, very positive, both relationships with OPERE, as well as the school resource officer. We also provided you a copy of those procedures that were developed. They were also shared for feedback with the policy subcommittee. You want to add anything, Mr. Swanson?
Sure. Thank you for having us back here for the review of the first six months of OPERE at Hingham High School. It's been a very memorable experience for all of us. I feel very strongly that it has met our expectations and really fulfilled our hopes and even surpassed what we had hoped this would contribute to the life of our school. And the survey data really bore that out. OPERE's approval rating surpasses anyone else in the high school.
Maybe not Monica Black's.
Monica, it might be tied with Monica Black.
Trying to have 92.
Yeah, that's a very good point. If anybody who could give OPERE a run for her money, it would be Monica Black now in her final couple of weeks at Hingham High School. But OPERE has been a terrific addition, and I, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee might have as we look back on the first six months. I know our original understanding was that we'd review it at around the six-month mark, and that's about where we are now. OPERE's first day of school was in May of last year. In some ways, it feels like OPERE's been around forever, but it hasn't been that long. She's learned how to do lots of things, really bring life to the school. And if you are following her on Instagram, like most of the South Shore appears to be doing right now, you would also know that she can even ride a skateboard.
Oh, you saw that?
This is a very clever dog, and one with just real special abilities to bring people together. And that was our greatest hope.
In the, we also provided a revision of the MOU to indicate a change that I think reflects the current practice better, that it's on the second page around the procedures, that the SRO is the primary handler, and that the animal control officer would be the secondary handler. In the original MOU, it talked for, about a guidance counselor and other school staff. I think we've learned that the cost of becoming an animal handler, certification, licensure, is not in the grasp of a staff member at this time, and that this seemed to be the best way to make sure that OPERE, the comfort animals, needs are being taken care of if, in case, the school resource officer is not available.
Okay, that makes, is a second change?
It's just at the very, at the very end of the review, because of, because the six months is currently, have to change it to our yearly review.
Yes, so that we'd yearly, around this time, review the MOU together.
Yeah, I think we're going to fold it into the, the full MOU with the police department.
So it's on the same schedule?
Yeah.
And, uh... And, my question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I, how is his schedule working out? I know that's something we've talked about in length when we first, back in November, when we were talking about OPERE and creating, you were creating a schedule for him, and how was that working out?
Right, the schedule has worked out well. We, we have it as a shared Google Doc that Officer Ford is, is the person who does the primary scheduling. But the, because it's a live Google Doc, it can be viewed at any time by any of the school administrators. School nurses have access to it as well. And so the dog is with Officer Ford for most of the day. In the morning, you would, you would find him and the dog out in front of the school greeting students, either right out front or in the main lobby. Most often now, as it's gotten colder, OPERE can be found on her bench, which is another great addition to the front of the school, as it was made by some of the students in our woodshop program. And so this morning, OPERE was there with Officer Ford for probably twenty or thirty minutes before the start of school. And then OPERE gets a fair amount of rest during the morning, too. So when Tom is teaching his class, B Block every day, the dog is resting, she's probably sleeping in her crate. And then she is on call as well. So Tom, you know, might get an invitation to visit a classroom, might get an invitation to go down to the transition room, perhaps down to see a counselor. And then one of the other staples would be lunchtime, getting down to the cafeteria greeted by students and spending time with kids there. And, and then at the end of the day, as students are leaving, that's also a time when an incredible number of kids really want to say goodbye at the end of the day to OPERE. She's got a real loyal fan base of kids who will say good morning every day and will need to say goodbye at the end of the day and probably check in with her at lunch, too. But then, you know, there've been a number of other occasions where Tom has been invited to go outside the building. He spent most of last week at the middle school, as they struggled with about the most difficult week they've had probably ever. In recent weeks, he's also been to other schools. Norwell recently had a tragedy. They, they, they asked if he could go over to Norwell for a day, which he did. He was over at the Apple Store a couple of weeks ago, too, as workers went back for the first time. So I feel like it's enabled us to be in a position of being a really strong community partner to the broader community and, and also across the district, too. OPERE has been to all four of our elementary schools on several occasions and, and to the middle school many times as well. So there's flexibility within the daily schedule, but you would find in taking a look at it that on a daily basis, you could figure B Block is probably nap time, and there're probably some other times where OPERE's resting and sleeping in her cage. But, but then the beginning, middle, and end of the day are pretty consistent.
Yeah, Al?
Well, I just had a quick question. I'm glad to hear it's working out swell. I've been able to experience meeting the dog and, and it does bring a smile to everyone's face. But I'd love to hear from Nathan. I know we had some feedback from the survey, but just your general kind of thoughts on how it's working out?
I think it's working really well. I think it's just a good present step to dog, and especially as a resource for students if he needs emotional support. I think, just talking about the scheduling, like I had Officer Ford come into a class recently, Detectives in Literature, which is an English class that like looks at detective literature and police procedurals. And we were looking at that whole police procedural genre. So Officer Ford came in to give a lesson on running police report. And OPERE was in the classroom the whole time, just sleeping next to the teacher of the class. So he was able to adapt really easily to a lot of environments, very well trained. I think that it's overall been a great experience. I, I think that sometimes, I mean, the, the thing that kids get, that's kind of, the feedback that Officer Ford was noting when he was in our room is that sometimes people find it weird how calm she is. So like, I mean, it's not like my home dog, she just is really chill all the time. But I, I love OPERE, I'm glad that we have her in school.
Right, thanks, Nathan. It does seem like that dog was born to be a comfort dog. The combination of its just natural temperament and its training has delivered a very, very special creature to us.
Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I love OPERE, I think it's great OPERE's there. I know this, sort of going back to the discussion we had last year on therapeutic supports and therapy dogs. And we, you and I talked about is some, is sometimes OPERE's acting as a mascot, sometimes OPERE's acting as a therapy dog. And when OPERE is providing therapeutic supports to kids in crisis in the transition rooms and all of that, I assume that there's clinical staff there, not just Officer Ford there, okay? Because that was a big part of the discussion last year.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I think on probably every occasion where Tom has been invited to go down to the counseling office to perhaps help a student regulate his or her emotions, you know, to, to help a student in crisis, or, you know, or to maybe to help somebody get into the building in the morning, too, somebody might be sitting in a car with, with mom or dad and unable to take that step into the building. And maybe the call goes to Tom and says, could you come down and, and help us out? And he would go down with the dog, the counselor would be there. And, and he would, he would stay for a few minutes
Yeah.
with the counselor there, and then probably leave with the dog, but with an invitation to, you know, if you want to check in with the dog later, you know, come down. And a lot of times, you'd see that kid come up at lunch and sit with the dog and, you know, just say hello at lunch, or, you know, pat the dog on the way out. So it's provided a source of comfort, but during those moments of crisis, absolutely.
I wouldn't want to put Officer Ford or any officer in the position of providing legal therapeutic supports to students, which is totally outside of their job description
Right.
nor their expertise, so.
Right.
Okay.
I think one of the things we've learned from Officer Ford is that there are different types of, OPERE might be, fall under technically the umbrella of a therapy dog, but there are different types.
Okay.
So this is not a therapy dog that would be used by a counselor, it's a comfort dog.
Okay.
So there are different types of training that someone would have to go through, as well as the animal itself.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a difference. This is a comfort animal, not a therapy dog.
I think those definitions are a lot of what we were confused about last year in the discussion.
Although Tom would also tell us that there's a big umbrella of therapy dogs, and OPERE would fall underneath that.
Yeah.
But there are different layers of training that are required. So I think there's a, a difference in the way we're using him, as more as a comfort, not as a therapeutic resource used with, in addition, in conjunction with, with counseling and therapy.
And that's how about, the letter is written and the policy is written.
Awesome, thank you.
Under a comfort dog.
And it's just looking, and just looking at the, what is the town animal handler's availability? Because you said the Animal Control Officer, I'm sorry. Yes.
Right, so I, I guess she's listed technically as the secondary handler.
Right.
The sensitive Tom.
I just know she doesn't work at Hingham High School.
No.
Right.
No, but she's, she's on call and, she's come through for us on many occasions, including one time a raccoon was stuck in the garbage.
Oh, I remember that.
As far as the school. You might remember that, too. She gets to us in emergency just about as fast as the SWAT team does.
And if there's anybody in Hingham who could, could compete with OPERE for popularity, it might be the Animal Control Officer.
I think so, yeah.
I think she's beloved, so.
Can I just clarify? The reason why that change was made was because of the extensive training that you have to be.
Yeah.
And that's to make sure that OPERE is well taken care of. It's not that the Animal Control Officer would now be serving around Hingham High School with OPERE. It's more to make sure that if Tom is not available to take care of him, that, that OPERE is, has, has someone to care for his particular needs.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify that, okay. Yeah. All right, Neth?
Um, in addition to what Tim was asking about the Animal Control Officer, so what would happen if there was an emergency at the school that Officer Ford needed to tend to and the Animal Control Officer wasn't there, available? What would happen to OPERE at that point?
In that, in that event, most likely OPERE would be put into her cage and have a chance to nap, rest. You know, if there were, say there were a real crisis in the school and we needed him to, to help us address that, that's what would happen. You know, and he's, he's got a decent-sized office with, with a crate, and so the dog could go into the crate and just, it would be like leaving your dog at home, you know, for however much time you needed to. And, and if there were a need for longer-term care, then we would, we would call for, for Leslie to help us out there. And, you know, hopefully that's something we will see very rarely, but in the instance where we did, that's what we do.
And then, just talking about the schedule, appreciate that Officer Ford can go and help these other schools. What happens to, what happens to the high school when Officer Ford's not there? Because I'm assuming he's the one taking OPERE to the middle school or to the other places.
Right. We generally would have someone else helping out and, and or on call. You know, in the past week, Caitlin McGill-Cuddyart, Elementary School SRO, has taken over some of Tom's responsibilities, including teaching his class at the high school, because he was in such need at the middle school last week. And, you know, then we would also just accept that we, we wouldn't have a full-time officer there all day long necessarily, but we would know who to call to come on over if we needed somebody in, in the case of an emergency.
And then one final question. Around the surveys to the student body, appreciate that the, my daughter, I ask her all the time about OPERE, it's her favorite part of the high school. So I know that there are a number of kids who love having OPERE there. I'm wondering about the comments that were less than supportive of OPERE there. I know that the, the small population is like four percent of the surveys, which extrapolated out, it's about forty-five students. I'm wondering about the representative survey. Was it representative of the, the groups that I'd be concerned about, or kids on IEPs or 504s? Any students on, in the LGBTQ community, any students of color, and then any Med Go students? I'm wondering if we got one or several of each of those groups of kids.
The only identifiers that we have in the survey are grade level. So we, we didn't ask students to identify themselves according to any other categories. We did have a, a nice balance among the four grade levels. In terms of some of the negative comments, I, I think there, there are at least some that we can separate out, as you would with any survey, knowing that some people didn't take it seriously. You know, for example, a few of them came in all at the same time. We're almost sure there were a few kids sitting in a study hall somewhere who thought it would be funny to come up with some things that were outrageous to say. Somebody, you know, wrote, I don't like OPERE, OPERE bit me. We know that OPERE has not bit anyone in the school, you know, so they're, sent a survey out to twelve hundred people. You're going to get some, some responses that you shouldn't take seriously. But in terms of representation among some of the groups that you mentioned, I, I would just say, based on observation, that OPERE has been disproportionately embraced by students on the margins. And, and that OPERE has, has been a particular gift to students who are otherwise struggling and perhaps looking for, in, in need of extra support. OPERE's done especially well with, with those students. And there may be others who can comment on that. I don't know, Nathan, would you, from your observations, do you feel like OPERE has been an equal opportunity kind of
I think that she's been an equal opportunity supporter.
Yeah. Yeah.
Equal opportunity pet receiver.
Yeah.
I think that I'd also, again, comment on the difficulty of running accurate surveys at the high school in that we did have experienced that with the mask survey last year on SAC, which we had to rerun because of how much it got bombed, with like
Yeah.
People sending in multiple responses, people sending in outrageous responses, you have to do some filtering. I had that as experience, I wasn't.
Right. What was notable to me was how few people made a joke of it. It, it really was relatively few who, who did. And, and reading some of the responses that were, you know, paragraph-long from people who did not have to write anything, you know. You, you had some things that were close to being essays in support. And I think we probably sparked some fear among some people that somebody was out to remove the dog. And like, a number of people did comment like, wait, why, why are you asking this? I hope nobody's thinking about taking OPERE away. We were obviously just looking for, you know, some, some broader response as we could get to try to, to see if our perception of this was accurate, that the dog was a big hit and was really being embraced by big sections of the school community, and it seems to be the case. Pointed out by the, by the survey.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I think my favorite comment was, she runs the school, and I'm not mad about that. I was like, did Rick write that? That was a good one. And I'm not mad about that.
Right. That gave me a good chuckle, too.
That was a good one.
So the, the changes, all right, it's technically a first read.
Okay.
We'll go over the second read next month.
All right, any other questions? All right, all right, so no action tonight? We need to, because it's a policy?
It's a policy-ish, change.
Do we need to approve the changes to the policy?
Well, I guess we're not really changing.
So there's, we have a
It's really the MOU that we have to update, right?
Well, it's, it's separate from the MOU, but it's a separate. This is just for the comfort dog. And last time we did two, two reads with it, so I think we should stick within a few reads.
Okay. All right, that sounds good. All right.
Thanks, everybody. I'll just add to, Chief Jones was texting me before I came up. He was expecting this agenda item to come later in the evening.
Oh.
He's stuck in Capitol Outlay, I swear, in this building. So he said he'd come here as soon as he could, if we hadn't got to it yet. He very much wanted to express his support for this and, and like me, his appreciation for the support of the committee in helping us to make this happen.
And, and I hope people don't interpret our asking questions about the policy as not supported. We all support OPERE and love OPERE.
Right, oh, thank you. You're right, we need to all do our due diligence, make sure we're doing it properly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson? All right, I, nine point nine is to consider proposed changes to policy, I need my glasses, IHGB homeschooling policy for a first read. So much like the discussion about the MOU for OPERE, we'll do a first read tonight and then bring this to the January twenty-third for a second and action. Okay. Do you want to take us to Richard? Thank you.
So we just had, this had come up in September, and we had time to sit down and just quickly go over this policy, and we realized that there were some things that didn't make it flow so nicely, where there's some discrepancies that align. So the first paragraph, you'll see the addition to add the school committee delegates the approval of home instruction to the superintendent, any approval or rejection of an application by the superintendent is subject to review by the committee. So we added that. And then at the, the very end, the last paragraph, you'll see that we crossed out with committee because it doesn't align with the first two sentences of the policy. And so it would read, home educated students approve educational programs, may participate in all curricular. And I, I had looked at some other towns, I think this might have been a typo way back when we were first going over these, because that, many of the comparable districts do not have with committee in there.
I think, don't we want to keep the West though?
Just take out the committee?
Yeah, just take out the committee.
Yes. Do the line a little bit too long now.
Would we still get notification in the packets of them? Or, I'm just, I'm just looking at any approval or rejection is subject to review by the committee? I don't know under what circumstances we would want to review it, but we wouldn't find out about it.
I think that in one meeting, we might have agreed to maybe some updates on the numbers of students. So maybe on the monthly, maybe we discussed, maybe I'm imagining this, but I
No, we did.
believe we discussed, maybe when we do the enrollment updates to add homeschooling on there.
Okay.
We did, yes.
Yes.
That was also included in the private school update, too.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yep.
I'm just thinking if there was a wave of homeschool applications for something like, you know, we saw before, a couple of years ago, that would come to the committee, at least informationally, not for approval.
Yeah, we, we might want to be, if there was a large number, again, we might want to be providing more information and updates about how that's going.
Okay.
I will fix that line, I'm going to work with, or if I can read.
My understanding, too, on this, I just want to be sure we have this very tight, that the MGL, because this reads that MGL requires the school committee to determine, and then we're adding the school committee delegates, but MGL also allows the school, so maybe that should include that? Because it sort of reads that master general law requires the school committee to approve, but we've decided that we're going to designate, so maybe that should just indicate that master general law that master general law requires the school committee to either determine or designate to the superintendent? And our policy is to designate that authority to the superintendent?
That makes sense.
Okay.
So the first paragraph, very first paragraph?
Yes. So maybe it reads the math, MGL requires the school committee to either determine or designate the superintendent?
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense.
All right. Anything else on that? All right. Um, that sounds good. Um, anything else from you? All right. Um, I'm actually going to, before we do subcommittee reports, I think let's do the forty-eight hours because we do actually have something in the packet for forty-eight hours. So just want to keep since we have to take action on that. Um, so this is a, um, a last minute field trip, um, request from, um, Jim Cotrimony. Do you want to fill us in, Margaret?
Yes. So this is a request, um, for the Hingham Boys and Girls, um, Hingham High School Boys and Girls Ski Teams. They participate in the Ski East League. Um, they do their dry land practices over, um, at Hingham High School. They practice on the slopes at Blue Hills. Um, their league competition takes place on Sundays at Ragged Mountain in Danbury, New Hampshire. Um, there are twenty teams that compete on that day, on those days. Um, the days that we're requesting are for, um, that league competition schedule. So the, the, those are the dates. Um, and the one coming up is on January, the first one is January twenty-second, followed by January twenty-eighth, February fifth, and February eleventh. They travel by school bus usually. Um, sometimes in some cases the boosters will pay for an additional expense to upgrade the bus to a coach bus, but they travel by a Hingham School, um, bus back there and back.
All right. Any questions? You good?
Make a motion to approve the travel for the Hingham High School Girls and Boys Ski Teams to Ragged Mountain in Danbury, New Hampshire for league competition scheduled dates. I will second.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Unanimous? Thank you. Um, all right. Now we'll go to subcommittee and project reports. I'll start with Matt.
Uh, only update I have is east council, school council is meeting, we're gonna meet tomorrow, but now we're meeting next Tuesday, seventeenth.
All right. Great. Thank you. Ally?
The Hingham Arts Alliance is having a board meeting tomorrow evening. And then Climate Action Planning Committee is having a meeting on Wednesday evening. They're also planning, and I will confirm with you, Michelle, but, um, they're planning to come to our twenty-third of January meeting to present the climate action plan. And I will let you know who they're sending to attend.
Okay. If they want to move that. To move it one more week, that might be? If they want to, it's gonna be, that's a kind of a busy night now.
Yeah. We'll see if they're interested.
But also if they, if that works for them, we'll accommodate.
Okay.
Tim?
Uh, it is a busy month. In that spirit, there will not be a special ed subcommittee meeting this month, uh, but there sort of will be because Wednesday, uh, next Wednesday, January eighteenth, uh, is the, the third in the series of budget meetings that school committee is having. And that's when we're getting granular about the special education student services budget. So I'd really love, uh, the, all the people that would come to the special education subcommittee to go to that meeting instead this month, uh, cause the budget's really important this year. Also in special ed news, the special education task force, uh, has, will, has been chosen and will start meeting, uh, their first meeting's on January twenty-fifth, uh, and representing school committee on that committee is Ally. Thank you, Ally. Uh, but the next actual, uh, special education subcommittee will be on February ninth. Uh, that'll be an evening meeting on Zoom. We're trying to do a couple of those every year to be more accessible to parents. Uh, the Hingham Educational Foundation is having a board meeting tomorrow night. Uh, the, uh, Human Rights Coalition, uh, we met on the fourth, uh, last week, Wednesday. Uh, and we're doing a lot of good work with there. We're working on a mission statement. The website on the town website is up and running. Uh, we're getting some training for us. Uh, and so things are really starting to happen with the Human Rights Commission. And the last educational program committee was on December eighth, which I realized was before our last meeting, so I probably had talked about that. But our next one is going to be on February twenty-eighth, uh, February twenty-eighth. There's also not going to be an, an educational, uh, educational programming committee this month, uh, cause it's all budget, all January.
Okay. So, um, Hingham Middle School Council will be meeting on January thirtieth next. Salary negotiations, we talked about an executive session, but our next meeting is Wednesday, January eleventh to meet with, uh, Unit B, which is a paraprofessionals to negotiate a successor contract. And we've also heard from Unit A, which is the teachers' union, and we will be, start to work, come up with some dates to start discussions with them too.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I'll go next. Um, a couple of things, uh, but school building committee is meeting tomorrow night at six thirty to, um, discuss the Foster School and I think some Plymouth reverse window project that continues to go on, but it's very close. Um, construction is, or work is underway, site work is underway at Foster School and it seems to be going very well with, um, Dr. Adams told me earlier, with minimal complaints. Um, it really seems to be going quite smoothly, so knock wood that continues. Um, the high school council met, um, on, yeah, December twenty-first. I was not in attendance, but Mr. Swanson very quickly got the minutes over to us. Um, so the conversation was around school improvement goal number one, which was civic engagement. And, um, Andy Hoy, Director of Social Studies, provided an update on the, um, school, on the department's progress in meeting the expectation for civics for students. Um, there was a budget update given and, um, the school improvement goal number five was discussed around community and culture. Um, there have been some really great initiatives done by the Hingham High School Unity Project, um, including they did a great, um, World Cup promotion. Um, they're planning for, um, the upcoming Unity Week, which is February sixth through the tenth. And part of that will include an in-school assembly and evening performance coordinated by Ms. Jackson, the, um, our MedGo director. Um, so that's great stuff. Also at the high school, um, CPAC and the Hingham High School PTO are putting on a, um, a, an, an evening for parents on how to handle anxiety, depression, um, with your children. It is January seventeenth at seven PM at the Hingham High School Auditorium, and I encourage anyone with, um, children who can attend that evening to be there. I think it's gonna be a really important conversation.
At that, there's also a Google Doc that I think you can also submit questions.
Oh, great.
And advance that you might have.
Okay. Is that on the website, high school website?
I've seen the link on, on the.
On some of the promotional materials?
Yeah, I think it was. Sent out from CPAC as well.
Okay.
Nadja Riay, Riay Lee, who's speaking at that is fantastic too.
Yeah. Yeah. It will be a really great event, so encourage folks to attend. Um, and then I do just want to clarify, sorry, because on the agenda, it says our next, that that we have an, our next budget meeting is January twelfth. And then the budget meeting after that, as Tim mentioned, is a Wednesday night, January eighteenth. Agenda says it's the nineteenth. But that is a one, sorry. That's our one meeting that we had to, um, for a couple of reasons, had to move to the, um, eighteenth. Um, that's it for me. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Sorry. One more. Um, January twenty-fifth, we're going to have a joint school committee and student advisory committee meeting at six PM, Nathan, I think we landed on?
Six or six thirty.
Six or six thirty. I'll, I'll confirm the time with everyone. Um, are we gonna?
I thought it was this one seventy first.
Oh, yeah. No, sorry.
I should have corrected that.
Um, and I think we are, do it, are we gonna do it by Zoom?
Um, I need to double check.
Okay.
That, that, that tends to be the preference.
All right. Perfect. All right. Just put that in our calendars for folks who can make it. I think we definitely have a quorum, so we'll post it, but if, if everybody can't make it, no problem. Um, all right.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, we had a Foster School Council meeting on December twentieth. Talked about the school improvement plan that's gonna be presented and the FY twenty-four budget. Um, as far as finance, I wanted to give a, an overview. I know we are in the beginning process of hearing the budget. The, um, finance and capital subcommittee was busy in December with several meetings, um, where we heard the first round of meetings presented by, um, uh, Dr. Adams and Ayesha Apong, as well as principals, um, directors of facilities, transportation, athletics, technology, um, the interim assistant superintendent and the executive director of student services presented all of their budgets over several meetings. Um, so we are hearing this, um, kind of the second go around. We had a bunch of questions that we were able to ask that, um, Dr. Adams has incorporated into her presentation that we heard last week. Um, you know, what, what I started off each meeting saying was that, uh, we are in this predicament because we have used one-time monies from state and federal, uh, government during the pandemic. Um, and then we used the fund balance last year, which is essentially the piggy bank for the town, um, to help fund any additional positions that we had over the past couple of years.